This is probably interfering with dinner for some of you and interfering with Braves Mets for some others of you. I just want to try to get out around the district as much as I can and meet with people and hear what they're thinking, so. I'm not going to give a long speech. I'm not going to give a speech. I'll just lay out a couple of things and then I'm going to take your questions and do the best I can to answer them. Obviously, this is the traditional recess period for Congress and it's, a lot of people think we're on vacation. I think my next day off will be the Saturday or Sunday before Labor Day. I'm not sure, but it's somewhere in there. What we try to do in these August periods is get out and do the work that we need to do in the district. That's what we're doing. We had the entire staff down from Washington last week. We try to do that once a year and we were in Chelsea after one of the meetings and got a tour of the Walmart training facility. And the idea is that I think the people, our staff in Washington, needs to meet the people that they work for. So, and we have been all over the district. I think the highlighted trip for them was getting to go to Golden Flake and eat some pork skins right off the line while they were still hot, so.
That'd be good.
Yeah, it would be good right now. But anyway, that's really what the August recess is about. Obviously, we've got a lot of work to do. It's a difficult environment to work in right now, particularly if you're a Republican. And it's pretty difficult if you're a Pelosi Democrat because the Democrats are divided like I've never seen them before. She's always been able to have almost absolute control of their conference because she and Steny Hoyer really controlled the resources, but with AOC, that dynamic has changed and it's really created some problems. There's some opportunities too because there are a number of other Democrats that I work with that we're trying to do some stuff on a bipartisan basis that really sincerely want to get things done. They don't want to get into the contest of wills between the older leadership and this younger crowd. And they're more inclined to protect our economy and our way of doing things than some of the younger folks, so. But I'm working to put forth the ideas that I think will be beneficial to the country. I'm chairman of the Policy Committee. I'm now in leadership on the Republican side, ranked fourth or fifth, depends on who's ranking, but I'm in a position where I can help our side of the aisle put forth some ideas that I think will make sense to the American people and will help us solve some of the more pressing problems that we have. For that, I'll be happy to open up for questions and I'll, whoever wants to start, you're welcome to start. Okay?
Hey, Congressman Palmer. Thanks for taking the time to talk to us. Since there's not many people here, I actually might have three questions or maybe two requests and one question. My first request, I'm not sure you can help.
Can you speak up where everybody can hear you?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. My first request, I'm not sure you can help, but I've been having a little problem with government. What happened is, before you think I'm strange, back at Christmas, I was turning left at the Narrows. So, I'm on Old 280, turning left on 280. And my son was late for a movie and I got to get him to a movie. It's a red light. I'm kind of edging out there to get him there so he can meet his other friends. And a semi truck full of lumber could not stop, which I didn't really notice, but cars had stopped in front of them, had to go to the mercy lane and just flew in front of me. And kind of just saw my life and my kids' life flash in front of my eyes, along with the lady in the car next to me. And we just kind of looked at each other, you know, wow, we're lucky to be alive. Well, since then, I've noticed there's been several fatal accidents there. And to be straight honest with you, it's just a horrible design, engineering. I think it's common sense. You've got a pitch of a mountain like this, yet you've got a red light. And large trucks can't stop. Now, I think before then, there used to not be a light. I almost think that might have been safer because at least you kind of knew when to get on or get off. I kind of think it should be an overpass, not to be some traffic engineer. But what happens is, no offense, I called the mayor. Mayor said, call the county. County owns Old 280. They say, we can't help you. Call the state. I called the state. They said they own 280. And they don't really talk to each other. And the amount of money to turn that into an overpass, which number one, I think would save lives, and number two, maybe even be faster if we're a fast-growing community and traffic in the mornings with even more people moving here. I just think it would be smarter instead of, you know, sometimes change doesn't happen until pain is bad enough. I'm not exactly sure how many people have to die there for some sort of budget plan to make that an overpass with an on-ramp. Not to get you into traffic, but I'm just frustrated.
Well, but that's not, that's a state issue. That's not a federal issue. We, I would have no.
No jurisdiction.
No jurisdiction at all.
And the state traffic guy, the head of the state traffic said, I couldn't do that without a federal grant or something.
Well, now, that's, it's their responsibility and they can apply for a grant, but there's no.
But they gotta be motivated to do it.
Well, there's no earmarking. I don't walk around with checks that I can hand out. We don't earmark.
Okay.
So, it would have to be the state that took care of that. It wouldn't be a federal issue.
Well, anyway, maybe you or someone afterwards that knows someone I could call, because I kind of get that, well, thanks for your opinion, because they probably look at me like I'm crazy. And then, you know, that's just kind of it. And to be honest with you, my life hadn't almost been lost. I probably may not even wouldn't care either, but since I saw it, it's kind of, I almost feel like it's our responsibility for the people that, it just sound bad, for the people that died to make this a voice. So, number one, there's that. Sorry, that was my big thing to say. Number two, I'll make this quick. Senator Sessions, man, I love that guy. One of the big reasons I love that guy is because Senator Sessions would call out IT companies that said they needed foreign workers, because we need to bring smart foreign workers in, when really, that's just a way to lower wages. And you could just have employees in Alabama or Mississippi, you can train them to do these high-tech jobs. So, I would hope, I'm not asking for advice, I just would hope that you would be open to that position. A lot of Republicans and even Democrats are because they get high-tech money. And just, it's the same way, like we, I'm a fan of Trump's tariffs. We do business with China, who has a currency that's not traded, it's the only currency in the world that's not traded on the open market. Clinton signed that deal and '94 talked about all the ships that would be coming out to LA to sell them stuff. Instead, all the ships bring stuff in. And I kind of think you need balanced trade. You need to have workers here to buy stuff to create a tax environment, not just, get to be a consumer company. And so, I know, you know, I'm a Milton Freeman fan too, so I'm a fan of free trade. That broke the unions. On the other hand, CEOs can be kind of greedy too. And they'll take it too far and lay off employees. So, I was a big fan of Senator Sessions and that.
Well, as far as the China deal goes, that, what's going on now is really not about trade. It's.
Could you use the mic or speak up a little bit for eighty-five-year-old people that are there?
Yeah. I can project. What he was asking about, what's going on with trade and importing of tech workers from India predominantly and places like that, but also from China. But also, the overall trade, so-called trade war that we're in with China, it's really not about trade in the bigger picture. The whole world is watching how we handle this situation with China. The Chinese have been stealing technology. They've infiltrated our universities. They've infiltrated a lot of activist groups in this country. They've tried to influence our elections. It's not just the Russians. They're active on social media. But the real issue here is, is that Xi believes that he is the anointed one to fulfill the hundred-year plan that was implemented by Mao in 1949. So, obviously, the terminus for that plan will be 2049. The psychological profile on Xi is frightening, frankly. China has really made advances in their weapons and they've done, you know, there was an international agreement not to militarize space. China has violated that. They're militarizing space. They're ahead of us in that regard. But their objective is not to become a major economy or a superpower. It is to become the dominant world power. And they want to accomplish that within this hundred-year plan. If you want to look it up, it's called a belt and rope, a belt and rope. They've invested in every part of the globe. There's over 10,000 state-owned enterprises that China owns in Sub-Saharan Africa. It's everything from infrastructure to telecom. The largest infrastructure company in South America has been taken over by China. They control both ends of the Panama Canal. They bought, a China businessman bought the, Chinese businessman bought the Port of Darwin. For a while, Australia allowed foreigners to make campaign contributions. They've stopped that. And what China's trying to do is to create markets that will basically shut the U.S. out. And they came close to destroying our steel industry. China produces probably four times as much steel per year than the rest of the world in its entirety uses. So, when you look at this, it's not about whether or not we're going to sell soybeans to China or whether or not our steel costs are going to go up or that, you know, we're going to have to, what they're trying to do to us is basically what we did to Russia, is put us in a very bad spot financially and economically. So, I had an opportunity to go to Australia and New Zealand, Vietnam, South Korea a few years ago, and they give us briefing books. And this was two years ago. Toward the end of the last administration, according to a poll, 40% of the people in Australia saw the U.S. as a declining power and China as the emerging superpower. And there were members of the Australian Parliament that introduced legislation there to officially pivot away from the U.S. and pivot to China. All that's changed. All that's changed then. We've had some very good meetings with Vietnamese, encouraging us to work with Vietnam. They want to work with us. They're very fearful of China. And they have an economy that is expanding at a very rapid rate and has potential for even greater expansion. The Asian Development Bank projected their growth at six and a half percent per year. And so, here's where we are. We have got to finalize this deal with Canada and Mexico, the USMCA. Canada has already signed off on it. Mexico has. Trudeau desperately wants it. And because he wants it so badly, Pelosi is under a lot of pressure to bring it to the floor. If we can get that done, the next trade agreement that we're working on with Japan, and then we want to work on a trade agreement with the United Kingdom and then the European Union. And I've talked to Lighthizer. I'd like to see us do a trade agreement with Vietnam because I think it opens up the Pacific region and particularly Southeast Asia. I had a meeting last week with some folks from Honduras. Honduras has created enterprise zones where American companies can come in there and operate under American law and not Honduran law. And what we want to try to do is help them build a power grid and create an opportunity for them to have low-cost energy. That's how you get businesses in and try to create a middle class, which is going to help us in a lot of areas. It will reduce the number of people that are trying to come across the southern border. But it also allows us to create new markets for ourselves. And I think we're going to be in competition with the Chinese in Sub-Saharan Africa because the next 57, five years, that's going to be an emerging market. Take a look at what's happened in Rwanda. Rwanda's an example of what can be done. And then India is going to be a major player. Their population will exceed China's in the next few years. And I'm actually having a meeting with the Consul General from India tomorrow afternoon. But we're trying to enter into agreements with them. And I think it needs to be broadly, everything from military equipment to energy resources. But that's what this is about with China, is they want to be the dominant world power. So, in many, I think, many respects, I would say that we're in a cold war with China. And we're in a precarious position because so many of the resources that China provides, we don't get anywhere else. And we're trying to address that here and in these other markets. Yes, sir?
I remember when Nixon opened up the dialogue with China. And something in my thinking, I don't, I'm not very smart, but just the suspicions in me said, you better watch what you're doing. And they kept telling us that it was going to be such a wonderful market for U.S. products, so many millions of people that, who need our products. Well, I can't buy an American product here of the kind of stuff that a country boy wants. It comes from China. And it hasn't always been that way. I was a young adult when Walmart began. And on their stickers, on everything that's sold, it said, "Made in America." Try to buy something made in America there now. And I just kept wondering. I don't, you can say what you want to about this, but I just wondered if it don't all go back to trying to open up dialogue and buy peace with people. I understand the idea of opening free markets and getting those faraway places interested in democratic, pre-enterprise stuff like we have. Japan's a good example. After World War II, man, they got on board. And for a while, well, everything we bought was made in Japan. Then for a while, it was made in West Germany, anything you bought. Now, it's either made or assembled in Mexico.
Well, actually, it's not. My wife drives a Honda Pilot, it's made right down the road.
Well, I think, I think a lot of stuff could be made here. I inquired about some new sprinklers for my yard to date. And I said, where are these things made? Are they made in Mexico or China? And I found out they're manufactured in China and assembled in Mexico and sold in the U.S. So, all I'm saying is, and I hope I interrupted somebody, but I'm just wondering what your attitude and ideas about that is, how far can we go trying to buy friendship? And I'll follow up with something else if nobody, and I don't want to take so much time.
I would much rather have the situation we're in right now than where we were heading under Mao and the Cultural Revolution. What you've got in China is the greatest advance from poverty to the middle class in the history of the world. I mean, like 25% of the population. It's unbelievable. And that's one of the reasons why China's having the trouble that they've got right now. You're seeing all the demonstrations in Hong Kong. That's not all that's happening in China. There's problems that Xi's having in other provinces in China, and it started in some of the western provinces. You give people a taste of freedom and some level of economic improvement, and it's hard to take it away from them.
So, in a sense, you're saying it's working a little bit?
Well, it's, it's, it is. And the same thing's happening in India. India's going to surpass China in the number of people who've come from abject poverty to a middle-class status. And it's going to be transformative, but it's also going to impact us. And I'm fine with buying products from other countries. I'm not totally with the president on thinking that we've got to have a trade surplus, you know, on every product or, because we have the ability to dominate the world's energy markets. There's a guy named Daniel Jürgen, who's one of the top thinkers in the country, runs a research group called IHS. When we repealed the ban on exporting crude oil, he projected, his group projected that over the next 15 years, just that would generate $1.3 trillion in new government revenues. And there's another group, and I want to say it's Brookings, but I'm not sure, that said that the exports of energy would add $1 trillion to our GDP. Well, what they're not saying is, is when you're exporting that much in energy resources, natural gas and oil, which Sub-Saharan Africa will be desperate for, which the Asian, the Pacific region will be desperate for, what they need in India and Central America, when you're exporting that, that addresses your trade imbalance. But if it adds $1 trillion to GDP, that's going to add 250, 300 billion a year in new tax revenues. So, there, this is good for us. And the more that we can get involved, and China figured this out. They've gone into Southern Europe, Italy and Greece and signed infrastructure agreements. What they're doing is they're creating markets and they're investing in these places. Transportation infrastructure is going to be a huge deal in Africa. They're building trains in Africa for them. So, we don't want to sit on the sideline and let this happen. And we're at one of those pivotal points in history where what we do in the next few years is really going to define what happens down the road. And I think we're in a better position to address it right now than we will be a little farther down the road because China is so over-leveraged. And then there's other stuff that I can't talk about.
But it was to kind of support what they're doing.
Well, we've made them rich, but at the same time, you've created tens of millions of people who don't want to go back to the old ways. I mean, Hong Kong gets us like crazy. That's why all these young people right there demonstrating. The younger Vietnamese, they look at South Korea and they say, that's who we want to be like. And I'm good with that.
I'm good with that too, but it seems like their middle class has grown and ours has shrunk, which I think is leading to shootings, dissatisfied men that can't find jobs, they don't see like a future. Our economy's changed. Detroit is not what it used to be. And those things are spreading to a lot of urban areas. So, I don't disagree with you. I think those things add value over there, so I'm not a hater on that. But as glad as I am for India, I would like to see jobs here too for our young people and our newcomers.
We have record employment. We have record employment in every.
But record employment at like Lowe's or Home Depot? I mean, there's people graduating college and going to work at Home Depot. There's not many like the career, see what I'm saying? Just being honest. I mean, I totally support you, but we didn't disagree.
Yeah, I don't know where you get all your information because we're seeing wage growth, we're, median income is going up. What, you know, like visiting the Walmart Training Center out there, we're seeing people who start out as people just working the floor that are now in management positions making good money. They literally have the opportunity, if they go to work at Walmart, to go to college. They've got agreements with colleges where they can go, they can take a college course for a dollar a year. That's what Walmart's doing for them. So, there's tremendous opportunity. There's tremendous problems too. Don't get me wrong. I think what we're seeing, not only with the shootings, but with the drug overdose, drug overdose death rate and the suicide rate, it is so high that the Center for Disease Control in Atlanta has lowered life expectancy for Americans three years in a row. That's unbelievable. The most affluent, most advanced country in the history of the world. And this might not sit well with some of you, but I think as people's religious beliefs have gone down, if, as the percentage of people who have no religion at all has gone up, there's a sense of hopelessness and despair that frankly, you can't accommodate with a good job, a nice car or a big house. I mean, you look at what's going on in affluent areas with drug overdose deaths and suicides. We had, last year, over 68,000 people die from drug overdoses. And that's probably under-reported by 15% to 20% because so many of these families don't want it on the death certificate that their loved one died from a drug overdose. I sat in a home in Shelby County with my pastor, sitting at the kitchen table with a couple while the coroner brought their son's body down from the upstairs bedroom. An affluent family, okay? And the number of suicides of young people, not from impoverished. And I mean, this is, this is bigger than having a job. And then you look at how we handle our politics and the divisiveness and the ranker and the anger and the almost total inability to forgive people who've been, you know, been slighted or wrong. And it leads to contempt and contempt leads to hate and hate leads to some really bad outcomes. But we, the polling that we're seeing from the social studies type people is that American attitudes have improved over the last few years instead of getting worse. And I'm a product of this country. I grew up dirt poor. And my daddy had maybe an eighth-grade education. He was a logger. I grew up in a house that, shared a bedroom. My brother had cardboard between the two of fours. First person in my family to ever go to college. Do you think that I hold someone who was wealthy enough to start a business in contempt? Absolutely not, because if it wasn't for somebody having the resources to start a business that would give me a job while I worked my way through school, I wouldn't be here. So, I like where we are. I think we can be a lot better, particularly on healthcare and some of these other areas, particularly in education. But I'm not going to get overwhelmed by what we screwed up last year or 100 years ago. I'm going to try to focus on what we need to do right now and get it done. Yes, sir?
I mean, speaking of healthcare, 1980, 46 of Alabama's 54 rural counties had an obstetrician in the county. Today, that number is down to 17. Alabama also ranks in top five in infant mortality rate, also ranks in top five in teen pregnancy rate, and of course, top five in football, where it seems like that's what most people care about. There is a direct correlation of what we're seeing with states that expand Medicaid and the openings or the survival of these rural hospitals. If you want to talk about healthcare, I would really would love to hear your thoughts on healthcare because a lot of people that I've worked with and a lot of people I see every single day, has nothing to do with any disease, be it hepatitis, be it AIDS, HIV, diabetes, whatever. That's not the main problem. The main problem what we're seeing in Alabama is the lack of access to care. And I would love to see some, I would love to see some real leaders in Washington, D.C. and in Montgomery to stand up and say, hey, it's time to expand Medicaid. There's a lot of women who have to drive over an hour just to deliver a baby, just to deliver a baby. Why? Because rural hospitals are closing and we're not worried about that. So, if you want to talk about healthcare, I'd love to see what your thoughts are on expanding Medicaid in Alabama.
Where do you work?
It doesn't matter where I work, sir.
Well, you said you have experience in it.
I've done a lot of work in public health.
Public health?
Yes, sir.
And you don't want to tell me where you work?
It doesn't matter where I work, sir. I mean, that's, I'm laying out regular facts and issues that every day Alabama's face.
Well, here's the deal. I grew up in rural northwest Alabama.
You got it.
And one of the reasons that obstetricians and gynecologists have left rural Alabama is because of tort liability. They have simply pulled out of those hospitals. And when you talk about the failure to expand Medicaid, it's the reason that hospitals closing. That's not exactly true either. What you've got are major, you've got corporate medicine now. And they're buying these hospitals. And one of the reasons they're buying them is so that they can take advantage of the reimbursement rates in those rural areas, even though the care is being provided in a metropolitan area-type facility. I'm from Marion County. We've got Hospital Hampton. There's one in Franklin County in Russellville. There's another one in Marion County in Winfield. I've been to Centerville, it's in my district. I've been down there and meeting with Dr. Oats and what he's done down there is amazing. I hold that up to my colleagues as an example of how to do this. Keen to all this and this idea that, the Democrat idea that we're going to have Medicare for all is a pipe dream. for all is a pipe dream. And this idea that...
But I want to ask a question, a question about why we didn't expand Medicaid?
Well, I'm going to get to it. Because when you expand Medicaid, look at Illinois. They underestimated by 50% the cost of the expansion, on both administrative side and the cost of buying the program. As a result, now, you've got fewer doctors willing to see these patients. Illinois is on the verge of going bankrupt. And this is true in other states, too. There was a report that came out the first of 2018, actually, it came out around May of 2018, I think, somewhere in that range, that showed in the states that expanded Medicaid, they started moving the older patients and other patients to waiting lists. And almost 22,000 people, just in the Medicaid expansion states, died on waiting lists. Okay? There are certain economic realities that people don't want to address. And what have I tried to do about it? First of all, I've tried to get the Medicaid funds block granted to the states so the states can manage the money to meet their needs. We sent out $36.3 billion in improper payments on Medicaid in 2017 alone. That's $36.3 billion with a B that never got to a hospital or to a patient to meet the needs that people have. And over half of, well over half of the problem is at the federal level. So, it's administrative errors, it's failure to document eligibility, it's antiquated data systems, it's duplications, it's all kinds of stuff that if we could block grant the money directly to the states, the states could run the program the way they wanted in the way, in the most efficient and effective manner. The other thing that I did is to take, is to try to address the whole issue of pre-existing conditions. By the way, I got the block granting of Medicaid into the healthcare bill that we passed in the spring of 2017. I also put it in there that the states would have the ability to impose work requirements on able-bodied adults without children. And it was a very generous provision. They, 20 hours a week volunteer work or in school, but they couldn't just do nothing and get Medicaid. The other thing, that was covering pre-existing conditions. I wrote the amendment that set up a guaranteed benefits pool that allowed anyone of their pre-existing condition to buy insurance. You go into an insurance company, you fill out a health survey, if you'd had cancer, heart attack, whatever, you mark that. The insurance company sell you a policy, they'd sell you a policy at competitive rates like everybody else pays. When you pay your premium, 90% of that premium would go into a guaranteed benefits pool. The insurance company only kept 10%. Everybody else would pay $5 to $10 a month more on their premium. That would go into the guaranteed benefits pool. And I backed it up with $36 billion for the first five years to cover all 50 states. The insurance companies, what they got out of it was that if you were in the guaranteed benefits pool and you got really sick, they would pay the first 7,500, then 10% of the next 25,000. So, their exposure was limited to $10,000. Any additional charges above that would be picked up by the guaranteed benefits pool and reimbursed to the providers at the Medicare rate, not the Medicaid rate. And that passed. But everybody knows what happened at 2:30 in the morning in June, John McCain did this and killed him. But we had a chance to address this and do it in a way, and I didn't go to the Congressional Budget Office to get them to do the estimate on how it would impact costs. We, Milliman, the top, one of the top, if not the top, actuary of firm in the country, came back with a report and said that for 20 to 30-year-olds, it would lower their premiums by 41%. For 30 to 40-year-olds, 33%, 40 to 50, 25%, 50 to 60, 11.6%, and 60 to 65, up to Medicaid, 5.9%. And they estimated it would increase the number of insured by 2 million. This wasn't something that I dreamed up. This is what was actually done in Maine prior to the passage of the Affordable Care Act. It worked, and they never needed another dollar. And Maine is one of the best places to try this because their, the health of their population's somewhat similar to Alabama. It's a tough, tough health environment. But when Maine introduced this, their premiums for the general population under Anthem, Anthem was their insurance company, were lower than the premiums for people in New Hampshire who are non-smokers, adult non-smokers, under Anthem, same insurance company. So, I've worked on this all the time, figuring out a way to do this. And the thing that I try to get across to people is it's not just the cost that we ought to be focused on. We need to be focused on outcomes. Because if at the end of the day, we lower healthcare costs and everybody's got coverage, but we don't have improvements in hypertension and diabetes and these other issues, and I don't know that we've accomplished a whole lot. So, I take a holistic approach to it and stuff I've worked on for years.
So, segueing...
No, you go ahead.
Yeah, so segueing from talking about the, well, or sort of piggyback on our help, the help for our nation, would you consider gun violence to also be part of that help? And do you think that we should be looking at that as a CDC issue as well as we should be looking at opioids and everything else? And you've mentioned suicides, which are drastically up in the last couple of years. You don't need to talk about the last few weeks when it's occurred. So, how do you plan to vote and what is your position on gun violence?
Well, I'm not going to vote for a gun control bill.
You're not going to vote for gun control? Why?
Well, because that's not, first of all, I'm not going to violate people's rights to keep and bear arms.
Mm-hmm.
What about the right to have a 100-round magazine to where they can shoot 26 people in 32 seconds? I mean, is that someone's fundamental right to have 100-round magazine drum? I went through Baghdad and I went through Fallujah with my weapon on, semi-automatic. I never put it on three-round burst.
Are you aware of that?
Those weapons are made to clear out buildings. So, do you support somebody's right to buy a 100-round magazine drum and to have full body armor and a helmet and to walk into a bar district, to walk into a movie theater, to walk into an elementary classroom, to walk into a nightclub and clear out a total room? Are you saying that you, as an American, you support other Americans' rights to buy a 100-round magazine drum? Is that what you're saying? Is that the fundamental right of Americans?
It is.
Oh, okay, it is. Okay, so you support someone's right to buy a 100-round magazine drum? That's what you're saying? That's what you're saying? A 100-round magazine drum?
I'm saying that under the law and under the Constitution, they have that right.
A 100-round magazine drum? Okay, what about the rights of the nine people that died? What about the rights of those kidney blooders? What about their rights? What about their rights?
The guy who bought the 100-round magazine lied on the form. He broke the law.
Actually, it was his friend that lied.
He lied. You're not allowed to buy a weapon if you have had a problem with a controlled substance, which that guy did. Plus, he bought it under false pretenses. Because when you fill out the background check, you assert that this is a purchase, a personal purchase, not to be transferred to anybody else. So, he broke two laws.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, so...
So, he told the truth, told the truth, he couldn't get it, and then his buddy wouldn't be able to get the 100-round magazine drum, as opposed to, as opposed to him just not being able to buy it in the first place.
Well, I'm not sure he could buy it.
Because it's his fundamental right, as an American, to get a 100-round magazine drum. And to be able to walk into a club district and shoot...
Because our founding fathers intended for the people of America to be able to defend themselves against despotism. That's why they allowed Americans to have...
Did they have a 100-round magazine drums from muskets?
They had the same weapons that the British had, including cannons, by the way. They had the same weapons that they did. That's the whole point. Go back and read what the founders wrote about this. They wanted people to be able to protect themselves against despotism. They feared despotism. The guys who stood at the end of Concord Bridge stood there with the same weapons that the British had. The British had better training, they had better equipment, but they basically faced the same weapons. And that's why we have a second amendment.
So, my weapon system was small, with shoulder fodder and multipurpose anti-tank assault weapons? So, are you saying that Americans...
Those are already outlawed.
So, but why, if American troops have those, why can't we, as American citizens, have those?
Well, we've modified it.
Because if the British are standing on the other side of the bridge with a musket, I have a musket, yeah, it's a fair game. Why can't I get a small? Or, shoot, why can I not get a howitzer?
Well, you know, there are a lot of people that ask that.
I'm asking you to go to your argument. Why can I not buy a howitzer? You know, and if I just happen to blow up a city, oh, well?
Well, because we have laws against that.
Oh, okay, but that still goes against your argument.
No, not exactly, on the small arms.
A 100-round magazine.
I just want to say very quickly that we could be probably having this conversation for a very long time, and clearly, you are where you stand, and some of us disagree with you very strongly on this. And, you know, that's going to be where we disagree, one of the areas where we disagree. I do want to say that my 17-year-old daughter got her first job offer, and it was at Walmart. And you know what she told me? She doesn't want to work at Walmart. Now, are you going to tell me to tell her not to worry about it? That there's nothing to worry about?
I'm concerned about it.
Okay.
And I've introduced a cosponsor to a bill called the TAPS Act, the Threat Assessment, Protection, and Securities Act, to implement some protocols like the Israelis use to try to head this off on... Okay, well, you don't see this problem in Israel, but practically everybody in Israel has a weapon. But we failed in a number of ways in dealing with mental health. I mean, I have had meetings with school superintendents. I've met with the head of the National Director...
School Resource Officers.
School Resource Officers. I'm planning to bring some people down to meet with the head of the National Association of School Resource Officers to deal with radicalization of kids. The guy who carried out the shooting in El Paso has been totally misrepresented in the media. The guy's an eco-fascist. He was inspired by the guy in Christchurch in New Zealand.
Yeah, it's not going to be helpful to talk about his inspirations right now, I don't think.
Well, it is in terms, if you want to try to stop threats.
Disinformation. He had a man, I best don't out there, sir.
And that's what I'm saying. Most people don't realize why he did what he did. And that's part of what we've got to do. We've got to do a better job of threat assessment. We've got to do a better job handling people with mental health disorders.
Tom, what do you think about bringing...
Other people have questions, I'm sure, so I'll be brief with that. Just kind of thinking. We saw films of bodies floating down a river in Rwanda. They didn't have a way to fight back. And if those people had the right to bear arms, could those dictators in those countries, and Rwanda was just one of them, there's been many...
I wrote about Rwanda back when it happened.
Yeah, and if they had had weapons, if they had the right to bear arms, the dictator who killed everybody that dared to disagree with him about anything, he just eliminated them and put them in the river. And, you know, I'm the kind that's, I'm thinking, boy, they should have had a way to fight back.
Well, I had this discussion with some other people who share your opinions. And I tell people that smart people learn from mistakes, people learn from other people's mistakes, and that's why you read history. And I'm sensitive about talking about some of this because there are people who remember it well through their parents or some of them still alive that went through it, but the Holocaust. The first thing that the government under Hitler did was take away people's arms. They denied African-Americans' arms in the late 1800s during Reconstruction. And when the Jews tried to organize and fight back, they had to try to steal weapons from the Nazis. The Warsaw Ghetto was fought with weapons that they had to steal from the Nazis. The Billski brothers in Russia organized themselves and got thousands of Jews into the forest, but they had to do it with weapons that they had to steal from somebody else to defend themselves. And if you think for a moment that the human character and the human condition has changed so that that would never happen again, there are places in the world you need to go visit.
But back to my original question, do you think the CDC should look at this as a national health problem?
Here's against Dickey, I'm going to...
I think that it...
I understand that that is now, right, but I'm just asking, because you did mention the suicides.
One of the things that I did was contact the CDC to see if there'd been a study on the link between psychotropic drugs and violence. There hasn't been. So, we went search worldwide. We found one, I think it was in either Switzerland or Sweden, and they found the link. But if there's only one study, that's not conclusive. That sample size is not big enough. So, I've gone back to the Director of the National Institute for Mental Health to see if we can, we can get a study to look at this.
Prozac, Lexapro, people that take antidepressants, that kind of psychotropic medication, you mean? So, people who are getting treated for depression might have a proclivity towards violence?
In some cases, they do. And we're seeing it with veterans. We're seeing it with veterans. There's a major effort right now to start treating veterans with non-drug, non-drug approach to things. There's also this issue of 6% of all the kids in our public schools are on some type of psychotropic drug, according to the CDC, and another 4% are getting mental health treatment outside of school. But what we're trying to look at is there are kits out there now that if you've got to have a drug, they can do a profile, a genetic profile of you to know what will work for you that might not work for her, that would have an impact on you that, in one way, that wouldn't have an impact on her. Those, when we met with them, they said they were about $400 a kit. If we can get insurance to cover it, it'd go down below $100. And we shouldn't be giving these type drugs to people and saying, "Well, if this doesn't work, let's try this."
I'm a sexual worker, so I work with mentally ill and that type of medication.
And, you know, it's, and for the vast, vast majority, it's fine. It only takes one. So, it is a much bigger problem.
Just adding to this area, I'm an NRA member, I have multiple guns. I fundamentally agree with your Second Amendment concerns, and I have those same concerns. And really, ultimately, when I ask about a 100-round magazine or this or that, you know, it's a matter of degrees. And I think it's time, though, to start looking at those degrees. And I have, you know, one concern that always comes to my mind ultimately is, if we did have to stand up to a tyrannical government, what would it take? And I think, you know, whether it's a 20 or 30-round magazine, I think that probably be adequate to use with all the weapons that are out there and everything. And I think that, you know, there are just concerns out there that, you know, whether it's expanding, you know, universal background checks, whether it's, you know, banning, I'd agree with banning a 100-round magazine. And I think there's some things, I know it's a slippery slope, and that's what the NRA worries about, that's what others worry about. There comes a point where you just kind of have to lay it out there, I think, and say, there are way too many deaths that are occurring. And it's not a matter of, well, if you've done this illegally, or who was right or who was wrong. It's just a recurrence that is like, it's a national nightmare that keeps recurring. And I think that there comes a point where, you know, the NRA is going to have to come off of it a little bit and say, "Hey, we're just going to have to recognize we have a problem." Lord knows our breakup with the family, the violence in Hollywood, the violence in video games, all these things are, at least is important, but of course, not addressed by a lot of folks and need to be addressed. But these are some simple measures, I think, that, you know, eliminate the bump stock. I mean, these things still haven't been done. They've been discussed a lot nationally.
I think the bump stock was eliminated by executive order.
Okay.
And I think the magazines will be addressed. But what I want to do is have a sensible discussion. I don't want to blame the gun or the 100-round magazine.
I agree.
I think that is, that's the instrument. It's not the perpetrator. And I don't disagree that we need to have a rational discussion about what people ought to be able to get. They shouldn't have a howitzer. I don't disagree with that. But at the same time, I don't want to go whole hog and just take everything away. And I think, I think it might not happen in our lifetime, but it could happen. You know, when Japan bombed Pearl Harbor, there was a discussion about invading the West Coast. And you know why they decided not to? Because one of the top ranking brass in the Japanese military establishment said, "If we did, they'll have a rifle behind every blade of grass." So, they did.
Sir, I think it's, I think it's reasonable to expect any discussions that start with what we discuss in terms of high-capacity magazines, in terms of background checks. It seems that those questions always devolve to disarmament. You know, we brought it up. A gentleman up here said it, you talked about that for a little bit. A gentleman over here, he brings it back to sensible gun control, and then your response to that is back to disarmament. You know, it doesn't have to be one extreme or the other. You know, I mean, I am someone who is for sensible gun control. There's other people who aren't here that are for sensible gun control. We don't always have to divert back to disarmament because that's not even a part of the conversations happening in DC right now. So, if we could keep the conversation on the same path, we might actually be able to get some stuff done, as opposed to this... As opposed to this fear right now.
Yes, sir.
Congressman, I don't want anybody fooling with my Second Amendment rights, period. And the people that keep talking this stuff, they keep talking about assault weapons, assault weapons. We got to do away with them. Assault weapons have not been legal for years and years and years. What they call an assault weapon is a semi-automatic rifle. And most people don't know what they're talking about, though.
Well, some of the things.
Like you say, I don't want anybody fooling with my Second Amendment.
Some of the stuff that's been discussed in Washington includes semi-automatic shotguns. I mean, you can say what you want to, but I'm, I'm involved in a lot of discussions and it's broader than just a hundred round magazine. I'm trying to find an opportunity to have a sensible discussion and, uh, and come to a sensible solution. This idea that bump stocks are legal, that was taken care of months ago by executive orders. Not legal to own a bump stock anymore. And, uh, but again, it does matter who carried out the shooting in Dayton. It matters who carried out the shooting in El Paso. The guy in Dayton, uh, had, uh, sim- um, you know, he was part of that Antifa philosophy. The guy in El Paso is an eco-fascist who believes in the purity of the races. And he went, he, and he, and he also believes that, that, that there are too many people damaging the environment and that murder is justified. And that they, they literally think that, that in the long run, you'll save more lives by saving the climate than you will take in murder.
Mr. Palmer, I realize you're with a friendly crowd and I don't want to be unfriendly boys and I don't want to take up too much air. So this is the last thing I'm going to say because it's just been happening on my mind and you're bringing it up right now when you're labeling people Antifa and eco-terrorists, et cetera.
Eco-fascist, that's what he was.
Eco-fascist, alright. I wrote to you, I've written to you many times or several times. And the last letter you wrote to me back, you called me a socialist Democrat. And I found that very interesting because although I know that most of your constituents are Republicans, imagine if I, if, if a Republican congressman wrote to, I mean, a Democrat congressman wrote to the Republican constituents, called them a fascist Republican. Now, to me socialism is not that much of a dirty word. However, I'm not a socialist Democrat. I am a Democrat, sir. And so I'm not sure why you thought it was important to call me a socialist Democrat in your response to me.
Well, I go through every letter that goes to my constituents. If you give me your name, I'll pull it up.
Absolutely, I will. You didn't call me, you didn't say you are socialist Democrat. You said, in my response to my concern about Donald Trump's racist tweets, you said, these socialist Democrats are of an arms about the racist tweets. That would include me because that was the point of my letter.
Well, see, that's different from what you said earlier. You said, I called you a socialist Democrat.
I, I don't need an apology. I just need to understand that it seems like if you're going to represent all your constituents in this time, we need to be very careful with name calling and with assumptions and how we speak to each other. So I was offended by that, not because of the socialist label, but because to you, that was a very bad word.
But you've concluded that with what this guy did in El Paso. And I didn't call you a socialist Democrat. You, you said that I did.
Mm-hmm, yes. It wasn't, yes, I can send it right back to you.
And, and, and I'll, I'll look it up.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you bringing it to my attention. But it is important to note what the motive of these people are. This guy in El Paso is still lying. And he's telling them what it was about. So.
Probably because of Trump's racism tweets, but.
With all due respect, ma'am, do you think it's okay to call our president of Trump, President Trump, a racist, but not okay to call someone a socialist?
Well, first of all, I'm not President of the United States, sir. Uh, our president is a little more responsible for his language and what he says to the American people than I am. Okay?
Why is that?
Pardon?
Why should, eh?
Why should, why should Donald Trump be more?
Citizens have equal responsibility in how we treat each other, including our president.
Why isn't it okay for you to name call but not okay for him to?
When did I name call, sir?
You just called President Trump a racist about thirty seconds ago.
I called his words racist.
No, that's not what you said, ma'am. You called him a racist about thirty seconds ago.
You know, I think people, I think that word is just a weapon. That's an atomic bomb, racist. And I've, I've heard it so much. I mean, they use it to just, oh, you don't agree with me, you're a racist. Well, I'm, I'm a racist. I tell you why. Bible says you're supposed to love your own house. And if you don't, more than any other house, you're worse than an infidel. And I don't go around taking literal stuff to the extreme like that. But I have to admit, I love my own people more than any other people anywhere. I don't love another race more than my own. I would be a racist if I did.
You should love everyone. We're all Americans. That's what, that's the problem.
It's just not fair to claim everything is racist.
Everyone's got to wait for that. Everyone's got to wait for the fact that we are all Americans. We're not fighting each other. We're not white, we're not black, we're not socialist, whatever. We're all supposed to be trying to help our country be the best it can be.
From a biblical perspective though, that's not it. We're all one. We're, we're, we're God's people. And, and for people who have no religion, that, that's fine. But we're all one people. There is no black, white, brown, yellow. We're all one people. And that's how I regard people. I don't, I, my chief of staff is an African American. He's like a brother to me. I mean, I, well, I, I know you're not and I, and I appreciate that. You've been civil and I appreciate that. But to your point, you're absolutely right. We're, we're so divided and we lose sight of the fact, when we start talking about what makes you an American, it's not. The color of your skin's not the blood in your veins, it's not where you're born, it's what you believe. And we've lost sight of that. Both sides have lost sight of that. I have confronted my colleagues on this over the immigration issue. That you're losing sight of, of who we are. And when you, when you lose that, then we're just a bunch of clans and we're going to harm one another. And when you can't have a civil conversation, it breeds contempt and contempt breeds hate and hate leads to really bad stuff. So, at, at the end of the day, we all, we're all going to live on this same piece of dirt and we got to figure out a way to live on it together. And we got to figure out a way to do it without calling each other names and using invectives. I mean, uh, you were offended by that letter. You ought to see some stuff that shows up on my Facebook. Okay? But you know what? I don't cast everybody in that same light. I mean, you all have a right to speak, but we all have a responsibility to be respectful in, in how we a- address things. And if we, if we can't, if we can't figure that out, we're in big, big trouble.
Yes, sir, but I do believe our elected officials have a responsibility that weighs a little more impact upon how we use our words than, um, my neighbors here.
Well.
Which is not, which is not condoning using invectives or vitriol or hate for anybody, okay? I'm just suggesting that perhaps our president and our elected officials do have, by dint of what you were going into, some responsibility.
Well, I can assure you that I have messaged both the president and my colleagues about how they, what they say and what they appear to condone.
Can you send that message publicly for everyone to hear?
I've, I've said it on, I've said it on, uh, the radio. I've said it in interviews. And here's another thing. I don't use the media to communicate, uh, with my colleagues. I didn't do it when I was working on healthcare. I mean, I would get stopped every day because they know I was working on something and try to get me to, to, to box myself in and box my colleagues in. And I, I told one CNN reporter, I don't, I don't do my negotiating through the media. I came out of one meeting, I have a sense of humor, it's not very good, but I came out of one meeting and they just converged on me like mosquitoes, you know, at a picnic. And, um, it was enable and I looked at them, I said, I've given up talking to the media for Lent. And they, they kind of chuckled and stuck to my phone. They said, I'm not talking to you. You know what? They left me alone. But right after Easter, one of them came running up and said, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Palmer, Lent's over. Will you talk to us now? And I said, sure. But I, I try to treat everybody, I literally try to treat everybody the way I want to be treated. It hurts me to think that you were offended. I, I take responsibility for it. It concerns me that you have the passion that you do, that you think that I am as hard-hearted as you probably think I am, but I'm not. There's media in the room and, and this may be media too. I don't say everything that, that, that I'm going to do and that I'm working on, um, for public, uh, broadcasts. Because as soon as you do, you're going to get attacked from two sides to stop it. You've been in Fallujah. You know it. You understand tactics and strategy. So you also understand not walking out in the open and, and, and taking the shot. Okay, so that's how I try to operate and, and, and I, and I know what I'm getting into when I come out to these meetings. But you have a right to, to speak to me and, and hear what I think. And I'm, I'm going to continue to do this.
And I want to thank you for holding these town hall meetings because there have been other congressmen, uh, a couple of years ago who canceled their town hall meetings and you did not. So thank you very much. Um, I've got a quick question about, uh, labor. Because a couple of people earlier on addressed, uh, labor. HR 1044 Fairness for High Skilled Immigrants Act, um, that was about the green card deal. Can you share why you voted no on that and a little bit about that bill?
Yes, I thought it hurt, um, to his point. It hurt a lot of people. It put corporate America in charge of who could come in here at the expense of everybody else and, and particularly the lower skilled people. So I, I thought it was a bad bill and even though my, a lot of my side voted for it, I voted no.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And I don't vote with K Street. I'm not, I'm not one of their favorites. So, and, okay.
I'd say.
Are you with media?
No, I'm just an individual. Anyhow, welcome to Chelsea. It's a pleasure to meet you. Just a, a quick question I like to touch on as far as the, uh, Second Amendment and guns go. I heard you talking about, you know, the possibility of maybe having high capacity magazines banned.
No, I, I said, I think it's part, we got to have a civil discussion.
Right, right.
And that'll be part of it. I don't know, uh, how we will address that, but, but I think you have to have a discussion.
I would just like to, uh, bring it up to the point, I don't, you know, as far as making the, the, the general population pay for the actions of a few, I'm a proud gun owner, uh, Second Amendment. But you, uh, I would just like to point out this, your average deer hunting, uh, shotgun that holds five rounds, uh, two and three quarter buckshot that holds nine thirty-three caliber projectiles, you know, with just a basic deer hunting rifle, a shotgun, excuse me, you can unleash those five rounds in about three seconds. So that's forty-five thirty-three caliber projectiles going downrange in just a matter of seconds. So to sit there and say that a semi-automatic is more lethal than a manually operated pump shotgun is really not a fair assessment there. I've got high capacity magazines that I've had for my whole life that have never hurt anybody. They stay at home. And I just don't want to be, um, you know, I don't have my rights deprived from it. And another thing I'd like to bring up, uh, I'll be quick about, about the red flag laws. I'm a little disturbed about that potentially being abused in having people's due right, uh, process, you know, due right to process, uh, being, um, you know, uh, trampled on because of people using the government as a weapon. Just like I knew somebody, for example, years ago, they had ended with their neighbor, so they called DHR on them to tell them that they were abusing their kids. And it took like three trips out there. If only the third trip, they, they finally figured out what was going on and said, well, we won't be back. You know, but I think that it's, it's right for abuse for innocent people who have done anything to be, you know, and, and it's a little concerned about the, the red flag laws.
Yeah, on, on your point about shotguns, that's the point I'm making.
Yes, sir.
That some of my colleagues on the other side of the aisle literally wanted to include semi-automatic shotguns. And they did not mention pumps, but it's the same thing.
Yes, sir.
And actually, it'll hold five rounds, uh, in a semi-automatic as well.
Yes, sir.
And, but anyway, that's, that's, uh, as far as the red flag laws go, there's going to be a discussion about that. And I've urged caution because of the Fourth Amendment. You, you have the right to be securing your person's effects, papers and, and things from unreasonable search and seizure. And there has to be probable cause. There has to be, uh, an affirmation, a warrant sworn by oath or affirmation for that to happen. And, 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 I mean, this really gets into some, some serious constitutional issues when, when you start opening up for someone to, to call and say, well, we think this, this person is a, a problem. And, and they could, they could have their phones wiretapped. They could have someone come and, 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 um, and, and search their house. And we've seen abuse of, of the Fourth Amendment.
Yes, sir.
And so I understand the concerns that people have. But there still has to be a sensible dialogue about this to bring people together.
No, I was just going to say.
It's good to see you. What, what you did, your shoulder.
Oh, just a life of surgery, but, um, I just wanted to remind everybody too that I'm sure, I've got a little bit of your concern about the hate and the divisiveness of this country is heartfelt given, uh, you're having experienced that whole shooting in Washington by this nutcase at the ball field.
I was twenty steps from him. I'm the one that yelled out it was a gunshot. I knew exactly what it was. I, I knew it was either two twenty-three or seven sixty, by the way it sounded.
How many?
But you know what? I never blamed anybody. I didn't. And, you know, I'm twenty, I'm from here to that wall from him. And I'm trying to get off the field. And, um, but I didn't think this is Nancy Pelosi's fault or I didn't think it's Donald Trump's fault. I was amazed at, at how people reacted. Nobody panicked. When they got the guy down, um, some of us were out tending to scallies. I was one of them. And, uh, but my thought after it was all over, and you won't believe this, but I'm going to tell you. I've never told anybody this before. My thought was for the condition of the individual who carried out the shooting, that what brought him to this, and as a Christian, my thought was, I wish I'd had a chance to at least witness to him before he died. And I felt guilt about it. But I didn't blame anybody else. And that, it didn't even cross my mind tonight until you brought it up. But we live in a time right now that's different than any time we've ever been in. We're not treating people well when it comes to mental health. We're not treating people well when it comes to some of the divisiveness that exists. We've created a culture where it literally, everybody's well-being almost seems like it hinges on how big a house you have, how big a car you drive, how much money you make. And when you don't have it, there's, there's hopelessness. I, I, and I can't explain it all, but we've lost our mediating institutions. There was never a time in my growing up years that I was considered for a minute throwing water on top or being disrespectful to an adult. Never. I would never have crossed my teacher or my principal. The churches were mediating institutions. The pastors were respected. Our, our government officials were respected. And, and we've got, I mean, we weren't perfect. I, I remind people this all the time. That the preamble of our constitution doesn't say in order to create a perfect union. It says in order to create a more perfect union. What that implies is the job is never done. And it's incumbent on every one of us to do our part to try to make it a more perfect union. We have screwed up royally in the past. I can't change the past. I can learn from the past. That's what I do every day when I go back to Washington, is try to figure out a way to improve the condition and to have a dialogue. And I get along with, with members on, on both sides of the aisle because I'm not going to be a jerk. I will defend my positions. I will listen to people and believe it or not, I'll listen. I will listen to people, and believe it or not, I'll listen, I go back and evaluate. I don't, I don't make snap decisions. That drives people crazy, because they're used to everything, and, you know, their news weather, sports weather, 30 minutes with 20 minutes of car commercials in between. They want everything done right now. That's not the way you do this. And we're going to have to figure out a way to come together. And I don't know what those mediating institutions will be, whether it's our schools or churches. It's got to come from the bottom up.
It does. Do you think it's, Washington, do you think there's a tendency to just depend on Washington more and more for everything, like top-down morality and everything else instead of the family and the church?
There is a tendency to depend, but also to blame. You know, I don't wear my congressional fan. People say, "Why is that?" And I say, "Well, when 85% of people hate your guts, why advertise?" But seriously, I mean, you know, when people have this image of you being a totally depraved individual, when the vast majority on both sides of the aisle are decent people, that's tough. You know, Plato said, "This is the great warning that we ought to heed about being a problem in government." Plato said that when the wise refuse to participate in their government, they will be governed, the punishment that they will have is to be governed by people worse than themselves.
That's pretty strong.
It's instructive, is what it is. And so we've got to figure out a way to come together as a people, to figure out a way to get along and to be other-oriented, you know, not just looking out for your own self-interest, but for the interests of other people as well. That's biblical, too, by the way. That's International Assembly for its time to quit.
Yeah, let me just, we didn't start this way, but I do want to introduce myself. I'm Ray Malik. I'm the District Director for the office here. Ethan Weiss back here is Deputy District Director. Denise Weaver is our Constituent Services rep, does a great job. You need to know who we are in the local office, because if you've called with a problem or an issue, we're who you're going to be talking with and trying to work with you. And want to let you know who we are. Have our office up here at Brookwood. We have an office in Clanton and one in Aniana that we attend on a weekly basis as well. So we are there for you. I appreciate you coming out. I didn't mean to cut it off, but we've got to respect the City of Chelsea and what they allowed us to have here with this. So thank you all for coming out, if we can help you.
Thank you for having me.